All the meeting to order. This is our first non-Zoom meeting, which is a good thing, I hope. All right, roll call.
President Byrne.
Here.
Justice Cook.
Here.
Abenheim.
Here.
Taika Okafor.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Markford.
Here.
Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
Abenheim, he doesn't wear a mask.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty for all. Okay. Are there any citizens that wish to address the board other than what's on the committee at the Hall? Because at the committee at the Hall, yeah, come here. You know, at committee at the Hall, you'll get recognized. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is David Taylor. I've lived in this village for 30 years now. And there's two things I wanted to say to you tonight. One is that I'm leaving here in August, regrettably. And this is the best place I've ever lived in my whole life. But I'm going to join my son in Wisconsin, and I'm going to retire up there. And I'm looking forward to that. But I really am going to regret leaving Vernon Hills because I know some of you, and I've really, really enjoyed my time here. And I wanted all of you to know that, that I really, really enjoyed my time in Vernon Hills. But the other thing was, on the Fourth of July, just passed, at 10 o'clock in the morning, I was on Deer Path on my bicycle with my Fourth of July shirt. And I rode the entire parade route with my bicycle and my Fourth of July shirt. And I waved at all the people that were along the way, and I wished them a happy Fourth of July. And they looked at me like I was crazy, and they were probably right. But if anybody asks you, if Vernon Hills didn't have a parade this year, you tell them that's a lie. Because you met the guy that was in the parade for Vernon Hills this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
There was a couple of American Legion guys that walked the route about 7:00 in the morning.
Oh, okay. This was about 10:00.
So there was two parades.
Yeah, I went about 10:00, which is the regular time for the parade.
It was a long parade. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is anybody else, you know, wants to speak on something other than what's activity at the Hall?
There you go.
Huh? No? Mark does?
No.
No?
Mine's working.
All right. Okay, first report is from Village Manager Flush Hour, seniors update.
Just, okay, good, it's working. We had some technical difficulties earlier this evening, making sure all the equipment works. First of all, I just wanted to say welcome home to all of our seniors. Just a brief update. If you remember back in March, we had to close the senior center due to COVID concerns. And the senior center downstairs serves as a main source of socialization for many of our seniors. They really count on that. And when the senior center was closed, it really was a hardship for them. When we moved to Phase Four, we contacted the Lake County Health Department right away because the seniors were calling, asking if they could come back. Lake County was excellent, provided us guidance on how we can safely allow the seniors back here again. They even sent a doctor to do a site visit on our facilities, to review our policies and our safety-related protocols. I'm happy to say they were very pleased with all of our efforts and approved all of our policies and allowed up to 10 seniors at a time to attend the center. They were just a little concerned because a senior is one of our most high-at-risk populations. They didn't want to take a chance of allowing 25 seniors downstairs at any one time. So seniors are very happy to be back. And I wanted to give a special thanks to Lisa Fishbach, who just showed tremendous patience with working with the seniors over these last three or four months. She's had to field a lot of phone calls from people who were very anxious to get back in the swing of things and then coordinate it once it opened. So thanks to Lisa, and welcome back to all of our seniors.
Well said. I'm sure they appreciate it.
They really did. And we did a lot of things as a village to try to stay in touch with them, including getting them to start their own Facebook page, their own email chain. We made at least bi-weekly phone calls to every senior in the community to make sure that they were doing okay and make sure that they didn't need anything. Some of our staff even put together little gift bags and hand-delivered them on their own time to all the seniors in town. So it was very nice. We did a lot to try to keep the seniors in touch and let them know that even though they were gone, they certainly weren't forgotten.
Okay, very good.
And the only second thing I have, just a brief announcement, that just prior to the board meeting tonight, Mayor Byrne signed a continuation of the state of emergency here in Vernon Hills. In discussing it with the village attorney, it was felt that it was in the best interest of the village to keep continuing those state of emergency continuations until the governor declares the emergency over. That way, if something was changed, if the governor was to issue new guidelines or guidance tomorrow, we wouldn't have to convene a board meeting and give 40 hours' notice before we took action that may be necessary. So anything that happens, obviously, the board will be notified if there's any new emergency orders, you'll be kept up to date. But we will continue the emergency orders until the governor declares the emergency ended. That's it.
All right. Where's the finance director at?
I'm actually coming.
Oh, yeah. You know, stating day for the record. I haven't seen you in a while, other than...
Yeah. It's nice to meet all of you in person for the first time. So I just want to give you guys kind of a brief update. My predecessor, Ed McKee, had run an analysis early in, early April, kind of trying to put some numbers into what we thought the COVID impact would be on our bottom line. And we sent, I think, on Monday, kind of the updated information. We had anticipated to see about a 50% reduction, especially in our sales tax, for the months of June and July in terms of receipts, which I kind of want to just remind that that would be the February and March collections. So really, that March collection would be the first indication because that is when the stay-at-home order went into effect. What I'm happy to report is that we only saw a 6.7% reduction and a 18% reduction for the month of March. So we were ahead of that modeling. So in terms of actual dollars and cents, we had anticipated about a reduction of about $1 million per month in our revenues. For the month of March, we only saw $125,000 reduction. And for the month of, sorry, that was for February. And for the month of March, we only saw $748,000 reduction. And so those numbers are a good early indication of the impact that COVID has had in terms of comparison to our projections. Obviously, we'll get a better indication when we get the April receipts in for July, which will be here either at the end of the week or early next week for sales tax. Because really, sales tax is going to be the revenue source that is probably going to be the most volatile during this process. So when we get those numbers in, we'll have, I think, a better indication. We'll report back to you when we have those numbers.
Okay. So it could have been worse.
It could have been, absolutely.
The other shoe has not dropped yet.
Correct.
The state can hold back on LGDF, which is the income tax and other miscellaneous funds.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we've got the holdback already in place, although we've a con for that in case the fair tax does not pass this November, they're going to take a bigger piece of our pie. And, you know, the state just announced earlier this week or late last week about a 14% loss drop in expected revenues on the gas tax. So, you know, we get a wee bit on that. I mean, we get the sales tax on that. We're not a big gasoline, it's not like whatever communities supply O'Hare with fuel. But still, there's going to be a significant reduction in that, and there'll be a reduction in the MFT, most likely, as that moves forward next year. So it's not time to say all is well. We need to still be judicious. And I know the staff has been, they've done a good job of identifying some expenditures, especially if we get lucky with the Lakeview project, if that gets pushed back by the state. Oh, it has been? Okay, so we've got a nice cushion there against what we budgeted. So that'll be quite helpful.
Yeah, and obviously, we're monitoring and communication with IML to kind of see what their belief is from a state shared revenue standpoint, to make sure that our projections are in line with that. I will say that the sales tax numbers are in line with a lot of the other surrounding communities that I've talked to at this point. We've seen, most communities have seen somewhere between a 5% to 10% decrease in their sales tax, which I think is better than most communities anticipated during that time period. So...
We're all enjoying the toilet paper bonus.
Exactly.
Yeah, maybe the big boxes that stayed open helped a lot.
Yep.
You know, I got a feeling, so...
Yep.
Okay.
Hold on.
All right, Kyle, thanks.
Hold on, hold on.
Whoa, sorry.
Did it register there?
No, the light didn't.
No. My green light's on here.
Okay.
So just to clarify, the May and June were a reflection of February and March?
Correct.
So why did you think February would go down since the school didn't start till mid-March?
It was based off the modeling that Ed had completed. I did not talk to Ed specifically about why he had a reduction like that in February. I know a lot of places did do a 50% reduction in the month of March, assuming that, yes, we went into a stay-at-home order towards the end of the month, but that activity and personal habits may have changed because the virus was here. I would have to ask Ed specifically why we anticipated that for February, but those numbers were, I did confirm with him that they were on a cash basis instead of an accrual basis, which was what I wanted to make sure of when I was looking at this analysis.
Yeah, it still seems surprising that...
I'm more than happy to talk to Ed.
What was the percentage that he expected for February?
It was 50%.
15%?
50% of budget.
50% for February?
50% of budget, yes.
Before there was any kind of lockdown order? So what was the...
My assumption was to be conservative, was to have a conservative model so that we were planning for worst-case scenario and having some kind of built-in cushion for worst-case scenario, just in case March, for example, had been 25%.
I don't think he wanted to be too aggressive in that we were, that basically is our fourth quarter.
Yeah.
You know, so we were kind of closing out the books on 2019, 2020. So it's better to be conservative, closing out those books for that year.
I guess. So what do you think his working model is for the months of April and May?
So I own the months of July, I believe it's still 50%, and then it starts to ramp up to 60, 70, 80% over the next few months. Is what, I know it ramps up to around, I believe, close to full collection around October, October, November is when it goes back to normal, which we may have to adjust depending on if there's a second wave or not. So we continue to monitor the model, and we tweak it based off of information that we have at the time. So it may change again, and if it does, we'll bring it back to you guys with that information.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Chief Kreese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to report briefly to the board, make a couple comments. You won't be surprised to hear me say that I believe that the Vernon Hills Police Department is amongst the finest in the country when it comes to selecting, training, and equipping personnel. These men and women are further supported by top-notch supervisors and regularly updated policies and procedures. Having said that, I don't think it's enough to say, well, we're good, or we're even great. It's, we're not perfect, and there's always room for improvement. So, you know, we don't want to take the community's support that we feel, we don't want to take that for granted, and we want to keep striving forward. I shared with the board in last week's transmittal a document, what we're calling our engagement strategies improvement plan, which really is, as much as anything, a conversation starter amongst our staff, amongst other departments, amongst members of the community, for us to really try and be okay with challenging some longstanding practices and traditions and some ideas to make sure that we are really staying very up to date. A lot of experimenting going on. You might hear about that, and, you know, I'll brief you as we go along because some of it's going to work and some of it won't. I want to make sure you are all confident that we will respond to every crime that's reported, and, you know, we're not going to experiment so radically that I think the village will feel any letdown in police services. But we do want to ask some hard questions and explore some new ways of doing and serving the community. Second to that, you may recall in my budget presentation, one of our goals this year and this fiscal year was to further evaluate the use of body-worn cameras. To that end, I have ordered that equipment. We've made an arrangement with our camera provider to provide us a trial and evaluation period, so no cost to us, to put some of these cameras out in the field. We'll have some of our select personnel around the clock on all shifts. Probably in the next two weeks, you'll start seeing them. And I'm anxiously waiting our experience with that and our feedback. And I would hope that maybe 60 days from now, I could come back to you with some, with a report of what that TNE period, you know, reveals. And I think that if things go smoothly, like I hope, that I also have a strategy to help with the financial implications of moving ahead with such plans. So just wanted to update you, that's kind of the latest that we're doing at the police department. And if anyone has any particular questions, feel free, of course, to call me at any time. And if any of your constituents, any member of the public ever, you know, have questions, please feel free to, you know, they can email me, they can call me, I'm happy to meet with and talk, probably meet virtually, but talk with anybody. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
If I could add one?
Yeah.
The, in tonight's omnibus agenda, item F is our annual payment for Omni Services, which is a service, and this is for the services that we in fact utilize. This is on top of any additional payments we make as part of our charitable donations to organizations that are available to assist. And they assist our police department on a very, very regular basis in providing counseling and some levels of intervention for disputes and things of that nature. And that's one of the additional things that I truly believe makes this department one of the superior departments in the country, if not the best in Lake County, one of the best. And their record for hiring and maintaining and training is exemplary, and I have no problems with the organization. And I'm very sensitive to the community needs with regard to policing, and I think we do an outstanding job. And again, by being proactive and having the services readily available to us on a phone calls notice, anytime, day or night, 24/7, 365, makes a big difference, takes the police out of being the social worker and getting those professionals on board immediately. And I think this whole board, staff, whatever, police department should be commended for all the actions they've taken over the years to ensure that that is the case.
Yeah, well put. And certainly, we can reflect on the fact that we haven't been drawn into too many legal actions by anybody, which is good, you know. Should probably shouldn't have said that. In any event, that's an important one, you know, to say the least. So, okay, so you're not pulling F, you're just commenting because it's a good organization. Okay.
Yes, sir.
We've been using them for how many decades?
We had the engage the services of our own police social worker for about 10 years, and we've been using Omni for at least 10 or 11 years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, we've had the police social worker program in place here in Vernon Hills for over 20 years.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Is there a motion to approve on the omnibus agenda? Excuse me. Items A through H.
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Aye.
Taika Okafor.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Markford.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Any unfinished, new business, et cetera? I just want to say that the send-off of, you know, Stephen Hart, who was a resident of Vernon Hills, took place on Sunday, and it was organized by our American Legion post 1247?
Correct.
Thank you. And they did a very nice job as the color guard. And then there was, obviously, I think, four of our police vehicles and one in the countryside fire protection, you know, trucks that escorted this young man out of town. He was joining the Marines, and he was going to get, I guess, sworn in on Sunday itself. So, you know, congratulations to him, plus, you know, the American Legion and Fire Department and Police Department. So he's on his way to, I think, he's probably already, his basic training is going to be in Camp Pendleton out in California, so...
He has a 14-day, in fact, they're going to end up going through a 14-day period before he's...
Sent? Oh, okay, okay.
And I'll make a comment out to Craig Warner, who is a part of it, who ended up was calling me, and he's ended up putting a lot of effort to make this happen. So my hat's off to him. Good job.
Yeah, you're absolutely right about Craig and the rest of the American Legion, so... Okay. Any other new business or comments? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice Taika Okafor.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Aye.
Markford.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to call the committee at the Hall meeting to order. First item is approval of the committee at the Hall meeting minutes of June 19th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Comments, questions, corrections, deletions? If not, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice Brown.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
Markford.
Epstein?
Cook.
Aye.
Abenheim.
Aye.
Taika Okafor.
Aye.
Motion carries. First item is Woodland Chase subdivision, request from Icon Building Group to increase the maximum permitted fence height.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, and thank you. As the board recalls, this item was previously discussed at the June 16th Committee at the Hall meeting. During those discussions, trustees raised concerns regarding the appearance of raising the permitted height of the fence in that subdivision from 3 feet to 5 feet, and they also questioned the effectiveness of a 5-foot fence from keeping out nuisance animals from entering the yard. Ultimately, the matter was tabled to give residents a chance to appear before the board and express their concerns directly to the board. The residents are now here tonight for that. I would note that the request has been amended. They would request that the 5-foot height be allowed only for the metal fences, not for the split rail or picket-style fences. That's in response to certain comments from board members at the last meeting as well. As a reminder also, the board can deny the request. They can determine that the change is substantial and refer the matter back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to reopen the public hearing, or the board could determine that the request is de minimis and direct staff to prepare an ordinance that would amend ordinance 2016-049, allowing decorative aluminum fencing to be 5 feet in height rather than 3 feet in height. Because this matter was tabled at the last meeting, we would need a motion and then, a motion and then, yeah, to untable the matter and have it re-discussed. So...
Anything else on that, Mike?
Not that I'm, if I'm missing something...
No, I'm just asking if you're okay.
Yeah, so that's it. So again, the residents are here. If someone makes a motion...
Yeah, motion to remove...
And then the roll call.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to remove it from the table. Okay, you got it. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice Schultz.
Aye.
Markford.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Abenheim.
Aye.
Taika Okafor.
Brown. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Everybody heard what our building director just said about the type of fence that apparently... Did you have this discussion with Icon about the aluminum and the iron fence or whatever?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, so the question is, how does that sit with, is there any residents here that actually back up to the forest?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, well, what do you guys think of what's proposed here?
Mayor Byrne, where are...
But state your name for the record.
Sure. Dirk Leahy, 432 Woodland Chase Lane. We're okay with the changes as made by you guys on that, and we do understand everything about the fences and everything and the, you know, appearances and whatnot and everything on that matter. We back up to a path that's probably, how far back is it, about 100 feet? It's about 100 feet from our yard, which backs up to a nature preserve back there, which does have a lot of wild animals back there, which is a concern to us now. As you guys are, you're concerned with wild animals not being protected from that or not stopping them. But that is contrary, that was an article recently in the paper about fences, especially keeping the wild animals out, and they do stop them. There's deer, I just had it on my phone here. There's some pretty big-sized animals in the back. You guys can see the...
Yep.
The buck in the back.
That's one that was walking down the path, is that...
Yeah, that's literally walking, literally walked right...
How many points was it?
What's that?
How many points?
Well, my friend said it was a shooter, so I don't know, but my friend said it was a shooter, so... But that is one of our concerns with that. We also have the walking path there, which we do get a concern with straggling people in the back there, as we've talked with Officer Kitchell, with Chief Kreese on that matter as well, too, with residents that come back there that don't live back there, but it is whole of property. So that's also a concern on both aspects of the wildlife and the people that come back there that avoid the private property regulations on that. So those are some concerns.
Okay. Just speak.
The fence height...
Yes.
Make it easier. The fence height and the public access back there and the animals and everything else, you were aware of all of this when you purchased them, right?
Yes, but the access back there is whole up, which means we are all responsible for the pathway back there, the members of the Woodland Chase. the pathway back there, the members of the Woodland Chase. So, we pay fees back there to maintain the pathway back there.
Now, but my question is, there's nothing, the three-foot fence was not a surprise to you. You...
I don't believe there was a height regulation when we first came on board, and that we've been one of the first properties.
So, Icon didn't tell you, whoever sold you the home didn't tell you that? We were told at the last meeting that everybody was informed. So, who's...
That I can't recall, but a three-foot fence, you can, anybody can hop over with their foot. So, I mean, a little kid can hop over. We got kids back there, we got a lot of kids.
Right, I understand. What I'm trying to establish is whether or not the builder informed you that that was a three-foot fence.
I can't recall.
It's in the contract documents. Correct. Yes.
Because if you think another two feet is gonna stop that buck you just showed us, it's contrary to what I've seen, you know.
It will prevent a lot of the other animals that are back there from coming in, but we're also concerned about the neighbors that are going back there that are not HoA residents back there, that there are private property signs that have been posted, but people don't realize that that area, that we're maintaining that area, we're paying, we're responsible. If anybody gets hurt back there, it's a liability on Icon and on us as residents, because they can come back and they can go after anybody on the HoA property.
What's that got to do with the difference between a three-foot and a five-foot fence?
Well, that would keep people out, it would keep animals out. A three-foot fence won't keep anybody out, it would hop right over.
Okay.
It just goes right up your ankles with the three-foot fence. Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Not... What's the issue with the five-foot fence? If someone, if a resident wanted to put a five-foot fence, so what exactly is the issue? From a building or is this aesthetics or... I'm not on the board.
Yeah, aesthetics and just trying to avoid a totally enclosed neighborhood. I mean, the...
Enclosed?
Look at the fences that are over there now. It's, you know, the ones that were created along 45 and that, it's just, and it's in keeping with the tradition of what we've done in the community elsewhere, directly across the street in Centennial Crossing and where you are in Greg's Landing, there are no fences at all.
Well, unless you have a pool.
Yeah, I have a five-foot.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I mean...
It's got a five-foot fence. The thing is, has anyone in Centennial asked for a five-foot fence? So, we've never, so no one's ever come to the board requesting a five-foot fence. So, to me, I don't see why, if, well, if a resident wanted to build a five-foot fence, two feet doesn't make it gated.
I'll go back to my fallback position, and that is, if a lot backs up to it, I would see the five-foot, but not everywhere in the neighborhood.
Yeah, but I don't think everybody in the neighborhood is necessarily gonna go to a five-foot fence. So, here's, I guess, my argument is this, from the residents' viewpoint. If no one's requested it from Centennial, non-issue. There's some five-foot fences in Greg's Landing, where I live. Carrie, you have one.
I do.
They're requesting a five-foot fence in their development. To me, unless there's some aesthetics, I don't, the gated thing for two feet, I don't necessarily buy that. I would, I'm supporting the residents', you know, desire to go to five-foot. I have no issue with it.
Well, and that's why I'm suggesting, I especially can see it on the backside, the ones that are backing up to the wooded areas and that, and I, and Mike, you had a list of those, correct? I'd be quite amenable to those.
The other residents, I believe they're here as well, too, that are requesting it also.
Two there, three there.
Yeah, there is another woodland area that is in the middle of the development that does have a lot of woods in that area, too, as well, and there's coyotes that come through the whole pathway back there, day and night.
Well, but those same animals run, do run along. See, the other thing is, once you open, then perhaps every other neighborhood's gonna want it, because animals go everywhere.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, that's speculative. I mean...
We have a process in place. I mean, you need to get a zoning variation for your fence, right, when you put your pool in.
No.
No, pool privacy fences were...
It was allowed by the HOA.
Yeah, no fences are allowed in Greg's Landing, except to encircle an in-ground pool, which is required by state law.
Right, and you needed to get a permit for that. So, there was a process to get that fence for that application.
Sure.
I don't, I don't have a problem as long as it's a decorative plaque where it's not privacy.
We don't have a problem with that either.
I don't have a problem with it.
And if you really want privacy, like, you could put in bushes that go really high. Do we have a, I mean, do we have a limit on how high your bushes can go?
Which I have around my fence.
Right, and I've seen people in my neighborhood, they got bushes that are like eight feet high that they planted, and that's privacy. And the fact that, you know, it's the steel and not the wooded ones, obviously, where anything could jump through, I get that. I really honestly don't see what the big deal is.
That's all that we wanted was like the same one that's on the lane with the metal one.
No, I know, I'm on your side here. I just don't see what...
I know, I appreciate it.
I just personally...
Can I ask, where did the three-feet number, three-foot number come from in the first place? How was it decided that that was gonna be the number?
I think that was...
We didn't get the property approved. We purchased the property already pre-approved, so it was all preceding us. I think it was a duplicate from the adjacent community.
Yes, it was, it was in keeping with what had been done previously in the few subdivisions that allow any kind of fence at all. We have very few subdivisions that allow any kind of fence at all. You don't, what are the regulations back here?
Well, no, you can, you can have a fence, but it's a three-foot fence.
Yeah, and that...
And there's a four-foot, I hate to even call it a fence, that separates the Abbott property from my property, or the Village of Long Grove, from the Village of Vernon Hills.
And it's just been pretty much consistently what we've done, community-wide, in the areas where fences are allowed.
And the deer...
I thought Deer Path had five-foot fences over in Long Deer Path.
I'm, I can only speak to it since about 1980.
Well, that's still Deer Path.
Eighty-five.
I know Deer Path has a lot of five-foot fences.
But Deer Path, that goes back to the 70s, it's, you know, so.
And that was probably some of the, I can't speak for a prior board, but it probably speaks to the reason that everybody's desirous of having lower fences to keep more of a... In my particular circumstance, both my neighbors, left and right of me, do not have fences. So, basically, we have an open area. I do have a four-foot fence that separates the Village of Long Grove from the Village of Vernon Hills. I live back here, and it backs up to the Abbott Farm, and I have all your animals come through. In fact, I was staining my deck, and I was sitting and staining, and I was kinda low-key, and all of a sudden, a chipmunk comes running across my freshly stained deck, but he was running at high speed because there was a fox right behind him, and the fox jumped up on the deck, and as soon as he saw me, he went in the opposite direction. These wild animals are not going to entertain a conversation with you.
It's not just that, it's also, again, our safety and our security with the people that are abusing the private property sign, because that's not, that is a private property back there, and it's HoA, we maintain it, we're responsible. If anybody falls or trips or goes into the pond back there that's not a member, they will come right after the HoA, and it's against, it's against Icon as well right now. It's a liability.
And I guess that would be something that you'd probably need to, because now you're talking about encapsulating the entire, the entire, we'll call it, Woodland Chase development.
No, not, no, not at all. No, we are not at all.
Well...
Individual home site.
Correct.
Solely. If they chose to have that fence, it would be solely on their home site, not altering any of the open space and leaving the open space as is and letting it graze over in the open space.
Well, I guess maybe we have an enforcement issue that you need to discuss with the chief.
Could you show me, are we talking about the pond here?
Yes, so this is our house right here.
Yeah.
And access to the street is ours, and it's right here, and then I'm right here. And then this is where people are, this is all private, this is private pathways that Icon has built, this is not public. We maintain all this area, it's right next to our feet, it's through the HoA.
So, you maintain that area, but, so where would, where would you want, where would you want a fence to protect that path?
So, we want our fence to come just here and not just up to the pathway, that's the, it wouldn't go beyond the pathway.
Okay.
So, Trustee Oppenheim, the area that's being discussed is, and there's a lot of other areas in this subdivision, are common area lots, they're not individual, and it's just common area that'll be the responsibility of the Homeowners Association, once the development is turned over from the builder to the HOA. Fences are not being proposed there. The request tonight is to amend the design requirements for fences on individual lots.
So, if we're not fencing the common areas, how is that gonna stop this potential hoard of lawsuits from trespassers?
Well, that would be our goal in the future, to have that area blocked up, but because of aesthetics, you or them do not want that buck. Again, it's a liability issue against the city, against HoA. Anybody that falls back there, technically, it falls on Icon. If they fall, if they slip, it's...
But doesn't that apply to the entire village?
No, it does not, because it's HoA, it comes back on us.
No, no, I mean, if somebody comes on my property and they could then sue me...
That part is true, but again, it could come back to HoA. If it falls on that, that property's not my property, that property belongs to HoA, but we pay into the HoA fees, so we're tied, we're all tied, all the neighbors in there are tied back to the maintenance property.
So, if anybody comes anywhere on my Homeowners Association, I'll be sued.
You'll be sued.
But your Homeowners Association is carrying a umbrella liability policy?
Well, we're not included on that until it turns over to us.
But Icon is carrying it right now, so. One of the features, though, too, when you put no trespassing and someone violates it, you have a better protection. I know, well... Apparently, you said you put up the sign, so.
They put up the signs, but everybody's violating the signs back there, left and right.
But if they come across and you have a sign that says no trespassing, they injure themselves, it's a harder stand for that individual to sue you.
That I don't know.
But does three feet versus five feet make a difference?
Ah, she's crazy.
I mean, if they're jumping a fence, they're jumping a fence. It doesn't matter if it's three feet or if it's five feet. I just don't get it.
You don't get what?
I mean, I don't get why the two extra feet. I mean, if someone wants to...
If they're gonna climb up a five-foot fence over a three-foot fence, three-foot fence they can step over, a five-foot fence they have to climb up.
Well, that's still, it's still an effort to step over. It's not...
No, not, no, not up three-foot fence.
Granted, I'm 69-years-old, but I'm not going to climb over a three-foot fence. I'm not gonna climb over a two-foot fence.
I mean, there's still a fence.
Eighteen inches, I might consider, because I have long enough legs.
And you're more likely to get hurt trying to climb over the five-foot fence than the three-foot.
Right, correct, so you're not gonna climb...
You're more likely to get hurt.
No, no, but you're more likely to get a lung.
Well, that's why you're not gonna, I guess, climb over a five-foot, you'll climb over a three-foot. But I mean, liabilities and regulations would have to be discussed with the board.
I apologize to all of you. Today is my daughter's 40th birthday, and I have to be someplace in about 10 minutes, and I was hoping that we would get through this sooner, but I have to leave. But I will tell you that I am not in favor of granting this particular blanket variance. I believe that we have processes in place with our zoning, specific requests and permitting processes, that individually, people can come forward, and if they create a, or identify a clear need, you know, it'll be reviewed and voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then can be brought forward to this body. But at this juncture...
So, are you saying, Mike, wasn't that one of our potential solutions to this is that consider a significant change and send it to...
Yeah, what, just to clarify, because, because this...
We have four other residents that are here, so they all...
Because the fence is located in Woodland Chase, and the height limitation is not from the zoning code, it's in the PUD that approves this development, we would have to amend the PUD to allow a fence height that's five feet rather than three feet. So, it wouldn't be a variation through the zoning board, it would be an amendment to the PUD through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, it's a little different than a typical variation process. This is the process that's in place now for the board to consider for Woodland Chase as a whole. And again, just as a reminder, the board's decisions could be, A, to decline it, B, to forward it to the Planning and Zoning Commission to reopen the public hearing and make a recommendation to you, or four, if you determine that it's a de minimis request, to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending the ordinance to allow five feet rather than three feet. So, what's here tonight is the start of the process is in place for regulations that are contained in a PUD. The ZBA wouldn't participate in this.
We do have, Mike, we do have other residents here that would like to speak amongst them, their concerns as well, too, so if you guys can take their, listen to the other residents as well, too, they're all taxed, paid dollars here.
I personally like to hear the residents speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dirk's neighbor, I am Schreeder 436. We were told about the three-foot, we were, when we moved in, and we moved in from, we come in from Singapore, and we were staying on Indian Creek Court, which is 200 meters from the property we bought, and we were told there is gonna be a fence. We wanted a fence because it was backing into the pond, as were, and we have young kids, and if you come in when it snows, and the first year it really snowed, last year it didn't snow, you really don't know what's the boundary between our lot, the path, the pond, which is frozen. So, we were very clear we wanted a fence, and we did everything, and then later on, we were told, when we came to know what was the height, they said, okay, we'll put a fence. When we came to know what the height was, we didn't read everything, we thought it was a normal fence, and in Indian Creek, which is 200 meters, you have a six-foot fence across all the properties. You can decide whether you want it or you don't want it. And we were on Buffalo Grove Road, so 200 meters ahead, there was a fence, and when we were told three, three feet, that's nothing. I mean, I mean, it was not gonna be, like, we were just protecting the animals, we don't have pets, but even our kids, it was a risk. We said, no, we're not gonna put a three-foot fence, we'll not, we'll wait, and we'll come back to the village after we move in. And now, it's a year that we have spent there, we see a lot of coyotes, we've seen a couple of fox, we see a lot of buck, we see a lot of deers. They come in, in fact, not only on the other side of the pond, and on that path, they have come in, and they have crossed our lawn, backyard, and have gone through. So, we believe, I mean, having a three-foot fence just doesn't make sense, I mean, and if 200 meters further ahead in Indian Creek, yeah, arguably, it's Buffalo Grove, pin code, zip code, but otherwise, it's there, you have six-foot fence. We were wondering, why does the village have an issue when in our own lot, we can put up a five, why can't we put up a five-foot fence? It's not for privacy. Privacy you would, of course, want higher, but it's not for privacy, it is for security. And having an eight-year and a 10-year-old, we would have loved to have it. Once we knew it was three-foot, we decided against it, because it's gonna cost us money, and there's no point in having a three-foot. We're not trying to protect a dog from going out, it was more for security reasons. That's what I'll say, and I'll leave it to some other guests.
Hi, Justin Milner, future resident. My house is currently being built, and when we decided to get a house, we definitely wanted a fence, because we wanna get a dog, and we wanna have children. And you've so eloquently spoken about how safe your community is, it's part of what brought us here, and this is a safety issue for us, as we've mentioned time and time again. A lot of the same echoing a lot of what you just heard, but we wanna feel safe that, not only that if we have a dog that we were to have outside or a child, that they couldn't get out, more so other animals coming in to do harm to anyone. So, this isn't, if the trade-off is aesthetics for adding a little bit of safety from the community that's asking for it, to me, it sounds like it's worth at least considering further. Thank you.
Well, the board on board fence along 45, right?
Yes, sir.
And that, how high is that?
It's a six. It's a six.
Six foot.
Six foot. And then going down 45?
Six foot.
Okay. And then going down Prairie, Buffalo Grove Road, whatever. Is there any fence there? Going south from 45?
On 45?
Does anybody live there?
Yeah, there is that, there's a six-foot fence along that 45 street.
I know, but is the, also, you know, go...
To, to, on Buffalo Grove, right, both the sides, 45, and, so we are in sections, on 45 and on Buffalo Grove.
That's what I'm trying to picture.
Does anybody know?
There are several large fences there.
Yeah, well, I mean, is that something that was put in by Icon?
Unattractive.
You know, the board on board going down, going south of 45?
They, Icon put that fence in, it was a six...
We put that fence along 45, as well as Buffalo Grove Road, sorry.
Okay, okay.
And isn't there one back towards Sullivan Woods, too?
Along...
Oh, along the cemetery.
I'm sorry?
Along the cemetery. Along the cemetery is what?
Of course, the cemetery, correct.
Okay. All right, well, you know, the pond is, I think, been described by the Illinois Supreme Court as an open and obvious danger, as in a body of water. So we have ponds all over town, and they don't have fences around them. You understand that? And I don't think we have any intentions of putting fences around them, okay? And with that said, you know, hopefully, everybody's educated within reason, if you're, you know, I mean, I've had a house on Greenville for, since 1988, and I'm on a pond. It's kind of appropriate, it's called Fire Thorn, it's behind the firehouse, you know? So in essence, you know, a lot of my neighbors, most of them, don't have backyard fences, and people go in there, you know, and they come from any place in town, because there's, we have a, like, a 30-foot park district easement, you know, behind all the, and there's a lot of those easements all over town. But, you know, you know, I don't have a problem personally with the aluminum, wrought iron, iron-type fence, but, you know, I would say, you know, possibly along the properties on the path. You know, 'cause you get deer, you get coyotes, you get, I've seen coyotes, deers, you know, on my property, or loping through, I mean, you know, because a deer can jump pretty damn high, you know? And, but with that said, you know, I don't think they're jumping in everybody's backyards all over town, but, you know, that's all I got to say. I mean, it's, you know, I don't wanna see five-foot fences all over the subdivision.
Can I ask, are there, are there fences behind Hawthorne Club on Sussex Circle? And, because those, those homes back up to the same, basically wooded area from the other side?
Are you saying where Jim lives?
Uh...
No.
There, there could be, trustee Oppenheim, back here?
So, back over there, where they, they back up to the woods?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Over there?
Yeah, I don't know.
On the east end of Hawthorne Club, they're on the opposite side of the same woods, on the opposite side of the same tracks as they are. I mean, do they have fences in their backyards?
Indian Creek Court, they have, so, which is also the same park, before Peterson Park. So it's the same Sullivan Woods, if I'm not mistaken, so Indian Court has, we don't have.
But I believe Hawthorne Club has the same three-foot limit, I believe.
Hawthorne Club behind us here, trustee Cook? You could have a six-foot fence there. There, you could see one from the window here if you, if you turn around, but I think, was trustee Oppenheim talking about Sugar Creek?
No, I'm talking about Hawthorne Club on Sussex...
Right.
...Circle.
It's a bridge that takes you to the path.
Okay, yeah.
For Sullivan Woods. And that, yeah, you can go down to their houses.
You, you could, you could there. Hawthorne Club was one of the last subdivisions, from what I could tell, that was approved without any fence regulations. And then came the Centennial Crossings, and the Greg's Landings, and the other subdivisions, and then that's where the conditions started to appear that limited fence heights. Really, for Woodlands Chase, the intent was to keep open view corridors of the forested area, as, as the name of the subdivision implies, it's wooded, or at least the area to the south is very wooded, and the area in the middle, and so the intent was just to, again, keep view corridors open, so that you can enjoy the appearance of a wooded environment.
I see no issues.
When I built my fence, my HOA required landscaping around it, to make it look nicer. I mean, that could be, I honestly don't have a problem with it, but if that helped...
It's, well, I think the issue is the precedent. We don't wanna create a precedent that allows for everyone to suddenly build five-foot fences everywhere.
But I don't think everybody wants to build a fence.
Yeah, I don't, I...
Well, you can't, you can't rely on whether or not everyone, whether or not you think everyone will want to, if, if that is the possibility.
Yeah, here's the other thing, look, we're Woodland Chase relative to where we live in general. It's on the corner, it's sort of offset, and it's half in Buffalo Grove, right? You got, half the kids or more going to Stevenson. You know what? It's not like it's in the middle of Vernon Hills. To me, I'll be honest with you, this, the fact that we have six-foot fences in other developments, and then all of a sudden, your precedent, well, there's precedent already that's been established.
Well, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I don't believe Centennial Crossing, and people are gonna be, you know, wanting to put up five-foot fences. I just don't buy it.
Yeah.
At all. Not one bit. Full support of what you want to...
There might be other areas. I get Centennial doesn't, but there, I don't know what other areas.
Right, it's been around 20 years, trustee Oppenheim, I mean, come on.
Well, so, so you brought up Greg's Landing, so is, is, this isn't gonna change the, our HOA rules, I presume, so it's still gonna...
Well, there's like three different HOAs where we live, so we're in north, you're in south, and, you know, so what are we talking about here, guys? Seriously?
Right.
Let them go two feet higher, okay? And it's more, I'm hearing safety issues, if you're gonna have young kids. To me, my, my pitch would be, you know what, I'm gonna have little kids, I don't want my little kid trying to get out of my yard, okay? Excluding the animals.
Right, but little kids, I don't think the...
Little kids climb when they, when they get older, like, two, three, don't they? I mean, you've, you've got, I got four kids, and they, boys, they'll climb. So if you want, they want, let's just say it's a safety issue, and the girls climb too.
So, Mike, the compromise you reached with Icon is that if we do go to five-foot, it is for the black metal decorative only?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
And you're sure somebody won't come in and say they want a five-foot wooden fence? 'Cause you gave us a five-foot iron fence, why not a five-foot wooden?
Well, I, I, I couldn't tell you what a future request would be. I would, I'd show him the film of this meeting, trustee Cook, and hopefully, that would keep him from coming forward with a request.
No, because the thing is, is one of my favorite moments at a meeting was a gentleman who lived over here, who came in and said that when he bought his home, he knew the train came through here, this was when we still had train horns, and he said, and my real estate agent told me, you'll get used to the train horn, and he said to us, I haven't gotten used to it, so could you change it and make them stop blowing their horns?
Many years later...
Yeah, we finally did it.
Okay.
No, I can, I can be convinced to go with the compromise, because trustee Taco brings up some good points, as long as it is restricted strictly to the black metal.
I'm sure all our literature is crystal clear in regards to that.
I sure hope it's better than, he didn't know it was a three-foot fence, so...
It's, it's in, it's in all of our documents, it's in the conversation, because it's unique.
And if that's gonna, ends up being the board's direction tonight, then it'll be clearly articulated in the ordinance that amends the original PUD for the development. And for us, that's our governing, governing document.
So are we, are we, are they asking for fences between the properties, or just in the backyard where to butt the, the walking path?
The request was for side and rear yard fences only, the board could approve it for only rear yards if you wish.
That doesn't help us, but where in the middle would it be?
Where the wood is, this button backs up to the middle area, not the path, but that middle wooden area.
You still want a five-foot fence for our grandchildren?
Yeah, maybe I didn't do a good job explaining it. He, the question was for, you know, not in the, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, you cannot have a fence in the front yard.
Not in the front yard, and how about, so the animal's gonna be able to go there if they want.
It'll start, like, from back of the house, to the back of the front yard.
From the back corner of the house, each side over.
Not the side of the house, to the back.
Yeah, and the board could direct that. The, the rear yard is defined as from the rear wall of the house, measured to the rear property line. So you could, if you chose, to approve the five-foot decorative aluminum fence only within a rear yard, and not within a side yard, which is part of the request before you tonight.
So in other words, you would go from the rear corner of the house out to the lot line, back?
But they still could get the side?
Yes, sir.
So they, so they wanna enclose their whole backyard, basically?
Would that work for the residents for security?
It's still what we're looking for, yes. If the safety purpose is of being able to have a child out in a, in a enclosed area, because the fence runs from the side to the back, hooks around, it separates from that other leaning area, that is what we're looking for. I can't speak for the rest of them.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it, and the thing is, is the residents that are here are all looking for a five-foot fence. There's not one, anybody out there that said, hey, I want my three-foot fence? So, so I have no problem with it.
Yeah, and, and since I've been the main opposition, in the spirit of compromise, I concur, if we go to where it's from the back edge of the house, and that it's only the metal decorative, I can agree to that compromise.
Could council speak to this? Jim?
Sure, sure. I, I think the important factor here is that this is gonna be an amendment to the underlying zoning document, the PUD. This will govern the entire development. This will not be precedential for other PUDs. Individuals would have to come in and make their case, they wanted to, for fences, or fences aren't allowed. This is unique because fences were allowed, three-foot fences were allowed, not for liability reasons, I can tell you that. The mayor, you're exactly right, this was an aesthetic issue. You know, it's open and obvious, this, it's not a liability issue to not have a fence. So I think those arguments can be put off to the side. But the governing document will be the PUD. Changing this will not be precedential to different developments, I think that's important to know. They will have to make their case for their particular situation. So I, I think those are, those are the considerations, and you can either direct this back to Planning and Zoning for further public hearing, and other residents to come in and testify, or direct staff to draft an ordinance in accordance with this compromise that you've, you've talked about.
What's it for? So you, we need a motion?
Yes, I would suggest a motion to direct staff, if that's the direction you're going, to direct staff to draft an ordinance for consideration by the village board, allowing for a five-foot fence of the black aluminum...
In, in the rear yard only.
Materials in the rear yard only.
Okay.
I'm gonna agree with that.
Is there a motion to that extent?
Motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice McFarquhar.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brown.
Motion carries. So we'll bring it back next board meeting, and...
Yes, sir, we'll prepare the ordinance as directed by the board, and it'll be placed on the next board meeting, which is the 21st.
Yeah, okay. All right. Going on to, you guys wanna go, you can.
Yeah, we, we won't change our minds after you leave.
It's, it's your prerogative. Okay, next is Forest Edge TH LLC, presentation of concept plan for a new industrial warehouse building located at 888 Forest Edge Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as the, as the petitioners are gathered up, I can just quickly summarize this. Again, this is just concept stage. They're proposing to demolish the existing building, which was previously occupied by Illinois Tool Works, and replacing it with a new 95,000-square-foot light industrial building. The site plan is before you tonight. The building would be very similar to what the board recently reviewed for the Darling Farm, although it'd be much smaller at 95,000 square feet. Again, this is just concept stage. After the developer completes their presentation to the board, and if the Cow thinks this is appropriate, then the matter should be directed to the technical review process. As a reminder to the board, because this is located within Corporate Woods, a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission is not required. Once they've completed the technical review process, this matter would become, would come back to the board on the committee of the whole agenda for further review and consideration with the, for the board. And with that, I'll turn it over to the developers who can present their plans to you tonight.
Can I ask a question? Who are you buying this from? Illinois Tool?
ITW.
Oh, they own the site, and the building, okay. All right, well, I mean, is there, I'll, you know, defer to staff that's here. I mean, is there any reason not to approve this?
Well, it's just concept presentation. We, I can tell you from staff's perspective, we've been working with them to make sure it complies with all the requirements of the PUD regulations, and at this point, we believe it does, we'd have to do some further review. But our number-one issue right now is some robust landscaping along the west property line, because it's adjacent to the Oaks, the apartment development. Now, the developers are aware of that, and they'll be, they'll be responding to staff's requests. Otherwise, because it complies with all the requirements of the Corporate Woods PUD, at this stage, staff doesn't have any concerns. Again, we have to go through the technical review process, we may identify issues at that stage, but as of right now, the village, the village staff has no concerns with this proposal.
Mike, okay, and this is what, next, the ZF Industries or somewhere close to there?
To the north.
Excuse me, to the north is the Darling Farm. To, north of this property is the Darling Farm. East and south is Corporate Woods, west is the Oaks.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'm tempted to just, if you want to approve this, a motion to that extent.
If, if the, if you could use the clicker and just show the board a couple of your renderings, so they have an idea of what the building looks like, it's the...
This is strictly concept.
Yeah, it's just concept. If the board has any reaction to the architecture, this is...
I like it.
Your opportunity to share your opinion with the developer.
We thought so, too.
No, they're not putting a five-foot fence.
Is there...
They want a tent.
So...
No, Mike, you, you said it, it's very much in keeping with the stuff we approved for the Darling property.
Yeah. It's, yeah, it looks similar to Neil Enterprises, which is a building that was completed a couple of years ago in Corporate Woods. It's, it's compatible with the buildings in Corporate Woods and the adjacent Darling Farm development. We like the architecture from staff's perspective.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that would be a red flag.
Well, this is concept, so the next step is go start doing technical review, right? Exactly, yes. Okay, I don't have a problem with this.
I don't have a problem, no.
Is anybody, everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna give the speech?
Sure, sure. Will you be doing a motion, again, you should have a motion to approve concept plan and direct the developer to go through technical review. Once, that motion, that motion will be made, but for the developer, approval of the concept plan, importantly, is not a guarantee that the village will approve a subsequent final or preliminary plan that you put before the board. After approval tonight, you'll fully develop your plans, which will be submitted to Mr. Atkinson, who will take you through technical review. There's a technical review committee made up of multiple parties, they will submit comments, the plans will then have to be revised to meet those comments. Following that process, you'll come back before the Cow, again, for a review and a recommendation relating to your site plan, your landscape, landscape plan, and your architectural drawings. The Cow will make a recommendation, and will direct the staff to draft an ordinance for final approval, which will then appear before the village board, who will act on the final approval. The board will have the option at, at that stage to approve, deny, or seek modifications. But importantly, for you guys tonight, this is a concept plan, not a guarantee of final approval.
All right, so you, you want a motion?
Yeah, I think that's good for the record.
All right, is there a motion to approve Forest Edge TH LLC presentation of concept plans for a new industrial warehouse building located at 888 Forest Edge Drive?
Motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further comments or questions? Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice McFarquhar.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Brown.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, okay.